And I want everybody in the room to say to the next people that come in, "You have to sit at the table." So we have a first rule to start with. And I checked with all the selectmen, I said, "Can I not wear a tie?" Because I want this to be comfortable, I want people to talk. So I'm feeling comfortable, I feel pretty good today. I brought all sorts of things to make it relaxed. And that's because the only way that you're going to feel comfortable talking to me is for me just to flat out say, "Feel comfortable." And say what you need to say. And there's two levels of this, which is you can talk to me, and I can write things down or remember them. Mostly, I'm looking for impressions of the town and your feelings of what we're doing moving forward relative to the recruitment of a new town administrator, first time town administrator, very important move for the town. But you also have the second level of we've set up an email. Oh, that wasn't nice. Now I'm going to be conscious of that.
Well, I thought other people were going to be sitting at the table.
Oh, they will.
That's why I had it central.
Everyone who comes to the -- well, what are we going to tell them? You have an email address. We set up special for Berlin. Do I have that right? Berlin?
Berlin.
I read somewhere, you got to hit that first. Burp perfectly. And I tried to explain what we do with that. So you know even how I get this information. Is we, you email your information to this address, and a person in the office takes it and copies and pastes it on to a Dropbox for me. And Bob, who works with me on this particular recruitment, and we go through it. And we see it.
You have to sit at the table.
Oh, good morning, Lisa.
I was on a call.
Didn't work, did it? We'll try again on the next person. Good morning. And so, when it comes to us, we get the body of information. We don't get the email address of the person. And so, what we're trying for is exactly what we get, is the information. So if you walk out of here and say, "Yeah, I had a thought, but I didn't raise my hand because I wasn't going to say that in public." But, oh, well, here you go. You still have a way to tell us what you want to say. No problem. Silence does not matter here today. But, you know, we'll kick off a few things, and we can be here as long as you want, as long as you're allowed, in terms of your work schedule. I would like to have an idea of who's here, and we'll do that in a couple of minutes when we have our table filled with all our late arrivals and that sort of thing. But with that having been said, my name is Steve Rollins. And I work for the firm that's on the piece of paper, Municipal Resources, Inc. And the firm has been in this business since the 80s, the late 80s. And...
You have to sit at the table.
Oh, please, please, you have to sit at the table.
Sure, okay.
We have our first one. Everybody, I'm very happy. Thank you very much. I'm Steve.
Jeff, thank you.
Jeff.
Why am I here? Everybody's over.
Because you're late.
We don't want him to feel that way. Because you're special. Oh, Mary, please.
Why?
Oh, because that's our rule. Thank you very much.
Anybody in white, ask to sit at the table.
You're not sitting up here.
Because he...
He wasn't late.
And Jeff?
Oh, really?
You know, the introduction is cookies and coffee are there? Both types of coffee?
I'm hiding. I'll keep you guys company. Dennis is coming. Dennis would like to sit at the table.
So the firm's been doing, you know, this is a recruitment process. You know, we do interim work, and we fill positions for fire police, school superintendents, town administrators. We do that type of work. We do accounting work. We do HR resources. This is recruitment. I've been working with the firm for a number of years now. I've been working with over 20 towns. Alan is the president of the firm. He's a former town administrator, former police chief. He's great. I love working for that guy. And he really knows how to do the background checks. That's why I really like working for that guy. And it's so much fun to work with him. And he called him and said, "You know, we were talking about another town." I was going, "Yeah, I don't know." Then he said, "What about Berlin?" I said, "I'll get back to you." And I looked, I looked Berlin up, and I go, "Yeah, I'm a Vermont boy. I'm from Vermont." And it's sort of like, 3,000 population, oh, three-member board. Let me just take a little look more. And it's perfect, you know, this is just the type of town I like. And then I'm in the business and having retired from the business because I remember when I got into it, the average tenure was two and a half to three years, and they're all a bunch of big talkers. They were just big talkers. And that's why they didn't last long, because all they could do was talk. You know? Do you know what I'm talking about?
They covered their ass.
Yeah. There's somebody I've already talked to about this in the audience. I'm not pointing fingers or anything. And I like to screen out those people because I'm more interested in the people that know what they're doing, and then work on the personality match. And that's the selectman's job. So we're trying to bring in competent candidates, and we work through a process that is this. And then we'll open it up. And I'm hoping that I'm generating some thoughts in your mind as I talk. That's why I'm talking. And then I'll be done. We interview with the board, we tell them what our process is. And then we talk to the board one-on-one. And I've spoken with all three selectmen by phone, rather extensive conversations, by the way. These are hour-long conversations. And we go through all the points. What are the issues in town? What are the personality traits? What do you want to accomplish? What's success? What's success going to be? How are we going to get there? So we have that conversation. And then we go to these public meetings. And we'll have another one at night. Maybe we'll have another one. Just depends on how things go. And then we'll move on to an advertisement period. It'll be rather quiet for you folks, but you know, we're going to be like 30 days taking in resumes. And towards the 30-day period, as it comes to an end, we're going to be turning around and asking questions. Resume questions, but essay questions based on what we've learned already. Because we will have developed an advertisement, we'll develop a profile of the town, we'll develop an ideal candidate list. It'll all be on our website, all have been run by the board. And we'll turn around those essay questions, and those poor candidates are going to start the gauntlet. And they're going to have to answer those questions. They're rather lengthy. It's going to take them a few days. We'll give them a week. We'll give them 10 days, whatever it takes. And they're going to answer those questions. And then we're going to look through them, and we're going to say, "Mm-hmm." And then they're going to get telephone interviews. Alan and I, Bob and I, whatever. And we're going to enjoy that. And then they're going to, depends on what happens there. But you know, the next step, depending on what happened there, they're going to start coming to Berlin. They're going to go to a search committee that you have here. Is the number I remember right, eight?
Is it eight?
It's dropped down.
Oh, seven.
Seven now.
We can't have a tie anymore?
No.
Oh, well, we're looking for consensus anyway. And it's going to be a fairly large number, a group that, you know, that committee can deal with in a day, but a fairly large number. And then the number's going to whittle down to a smaller number, you know, handful. And that number's going to the selectmen. And at that point, we're sort of backing out, and it's become your search. You know, the whole transition has taken place right in that period. And then your board's evaluating, and they're going to know everything that we know. We're going to tell them all that we know about these candidates. But hopefully, we have already screened out what we don't feel are good candidates for the profession, and that we don't feel are good candidates for the town. But we already have moved it into the category we feel are good candidates for the town. You know, I really hope, I'm excited about, we're talking about it in the firm already because this is a really unique situation where you've got a town of 3,000, a first-time position, and you've got, you know, it's, the compensation's good, I mean, it's, this is Metro West, this is the Boston area, you know, the competition's different. But you know, you've got to capture somebody, in our opinion, that is interested in going into a situation like this where they have to know quite a lot about a lot of things, or at least a little bit about a lot of things. And they have to, you know, they have to carry themselves in a way that's going to create confidence in who they are and what they are, and that they're going to pay attention to what this town is interested. And they're going to have to work well with the selectmen. Well, there we are. We're at the endpoint of what I'm going to talk about because figuring out who's going to work well with the selectmen is the decision that the selectmen are going to make. But getting there is part of this process. So there, now you know where you are in our process. So just to kick things off, I thought, okay, there you go. If you look at your piece of paper, I put down three discussion points, and I'm going to bring one up after I go through it. You know, what are the issues? What do you think the issues of the town are? I think I've got a conservation person in the audience. I know that already. You're not a plant, but you know, I'm going to take advantage of you being here if you don't mind. And then...
I thought you meant a plant.
Ooh, that was good. That was good. And then the roles, expectations. You're a good, you know, good audience for that issue because a lot of you are employees. Could I just see, you know, give me some indication, how many of you are employees of the town? Okay, so this is really good, a good area for you folks to weigh in on so I can understand. Just so you know, I've been a treasurer, collector, retirement officer, assessor in the field, out of the field, I worked in criminal justice for six months. I've worked with the town clerk, I've worked, I've downtown reports, I've worked with, I've worked in a lot of areas before I became a town administrator. So I really have hardcore experience in a lot of areas. And when you talk to me, I'm going to understand a lot of what you're talking about, okay? And then the characteristics, the attributes. That should be fun. That should be interesting. I've heard a lot about budgeting. Here we go. Who here has a budget to submit? Everybody submits a budget? Who's responsible for submitting a budget for their department?
Department head.
One, two, yeah, I'm looking for actual people. So I got four people, five people, six people that actually do that. So how can a town administrator affect that process? I mean, let's bring it right down to what you're doing right now.
Really give some direction.
Yeah?
Some of the...
And what type of direction is that?
It's been very difficult over the last few years of the budget process, working with the finance committee, and truly getting what our goals are, what are our financial goals for the town. We got a letter this year that said to be frugal. Didn't really lay out...
That's a good budget word, frugal. I like that one.
Anyway, where we're moving, what are our goals? Are we looking at triangle-level funds, staying at a 2% increase? These are where revenues are.
Oh, something more...
Something more structured.
Concrete.
Concrete to really move forward. Makes it, you know...
How many committees do you have to go through?
Do longer-term planning that way.
In terms of your budget, how many committees do you have to go through?
It's going through the board, the selectmen, and the finance committee.
Two committees?
Capital planning.
Three committees?
Which is, it's fine, the way that works to a point. Capital planning is a newer committee, and I think we're still working out a lot of bugs on that.
Do you have to go through a personnel committee?
On the budget, no.
Okay.
Well...
Depends on what department you're in.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I'm asking, you know, for your department, though.
I'm in the contract, so it's different than...
But for your department, it's three?
For my department, it's three committees, yeah.
But for your department, it's four?
Well, it would be two, three.
It's climbing, man.
I'm in the ass, I have a board of assessors, so I have the board, personnel, and finance.
Okay.
And capital, you need a different purchase.
Yes, yes.
Capital for the capital.
Yeah, and you know, what's your experience with the budget process in terms of a town administrator?
Like, direction would be nice, so that everybody's on the same page and...
Communication.
Yeah, there's a plan, there needs to be an overall plan.
So if...
Are we putting money aside to save for free cash or stabilization fund? What is the goal? Is it funded?
Yeah, that's a good question. Who comes and asks you in terms of, you know, what is your overlay surplus number, you know?
The chairman. Nobody asked me about overlay surplus this year. They just asked me about new growth.
Okay. So who does that now?
Asked the new growth, the chair of the finance committee, yes.
Finance puts that together? They put that level of budgeting, they put that revenue piece together now?
Yes.
Uh-huh.
So, but...
So if a town administrator came in and said, "I'd like to focus the revenues together and get that piece together," that'd be comfortable with you?
Yeah, just to...
Because that would make sense.
Overall plan, yeah.
Yeah?
I'm an assessor, so I kind of like the rules. I'm in the rule department.
Structure, okay. I got it.
Yes, structure.
Okay, I heard somebody else weighing in here, but I wasn't able to... Oh, yes. Another cookie? Did you want another cookie?
No, 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 no.
No, okay.
My stomach can't handle it right now. But anyway, mission, vision, and goals, and a strategic plan.
Oh.
That's what I'm saying. Would help a lot of things for the town, what is our overall mission for the town. And that would help with the, and the goals and a plan so that with capital planning and finance and everybody, we're all working.
So when you respond to an emergency, and you, say you have a, you know, a flu, a pandemic-type emergency, how does the emergency response work here? Unified command?
We have unified command, we have...
And who's the head of that specific example?
What's that?
Who's the head of the unified command in that specific example here?
The officer, first officer on scene. May not be the chief at the point in time, but it's the first officer on scene.
Really? So, does, what if it's a fire? What if it's a, some sort of fire-related?
Same, same thing.
First officer on scene?
First, first 11th officer on scene has...
It doesn't switch around depending on the type of emergency? It can?
It can, but we...
So when someone arrives who's a superior officer with the expertise in the field, does it change?
Does, you don't automatically take over. It depends on what's going on at the time, what the staffing levels are, does the officer... That's how we train our younger officers, is by not necessarily taking over every incident, but being there to help, to guide them through.
Is the board of health ever in charge?
Is, if there was a, if there was a board of health emergency, that certain areas they would be in charge, but unified command, the incident handler, there's one person in charge.
Right.
Runs the show.
Right, right.
Again, typically the fire chief, but it could be a senior officer that's going to run and coordinate things, as we talked about with, with the police department. In an active shooter situation, we're going to come and we're going to set up...
Okay, well, I'm moving, I'm moving somewhere. I'm going somewhere with this. So is there a written process that determines who's in charge of that?
Yeah.
Okay, and so if there was, it sounded a pretty moving target to me, and I was wondering because, you know, it can be any number of expertises in charge, as you know, in terms, depending on the situation. So the first officer in responding surprised me a little bit, but...
Depending on the situation, you may have a situation where you have, the board of health is there, police chief's there, highway superintendent's there, and you're all in one group. One person's leading, but it's a group that are making this, kind of making the decisions together.
Okay, so you've recently moved that your, your response, your dispatch?
Yes.
And dispatch has all these things written out in terms of who gets called, and who responds, and which truck, and all that sort of thing. So that's all written down already. And you find it frustrating in terms of the budget that these things aren't all laid out in the same way?
At times, like I said, just a little more, a little more guidance, a little more... I said, overall direction, where's the town going? It's, you have revenue streams that come in, into the town, but not necessarily, is there a plan, or depending on who you talk to, that I got different plans for those?
Well, there's a lot of writing we're talking about here. We're talking about policies and procedures and writing and writing and writing. You know, there's a lot of writing here. This board's going to be approving a lot of policies here in the first year, from the sounds of it. Yeah? Okay with that? Because if we're talking about budgets, we might be talking about human resources. Anybody have any issues relative to that? That would be...
I think that's one of the overall challenges with this, and you kind of touched on earlier, the amount of things that are coming up and coordinating. And HR is another huge issue, that it's, everything's decentralized here, and we need to kind of bring it all together. We're asking someone to come into a position to handle finance, handle HR, handle overall management of all the other departments. There's, there's a huge ask for this position. It's going to present a lot of challenges, but also a lot of opportunities.
Oh, well-worded. I like asking opportunity, you know, they go hand in hand, and they do, they do. Are the expectations for this position realistic? I mean, are we giving this person, you know, a timeline of in so many months, you know, we got to accomplish all this, or are we, are we realistic? You know, what are the hopes here?
Are those expectations clearly defined already?
Well, I think we're working on them right now. And we're going to be communicating some of this to candidates. And part of what we're going to be saying to the candidates, this town, I hope we're going to be saying this to the candidate, this town needs some experience in pulling together, from the big picture down, a focus. And you can only say that to someone who has some experience. So you never know what you're going to get for a candidate, but in terms of experience, I can see that would be extremely helpful here.
Do you think that's going to be a challenge to find when experienced people look? It's a community of 3,000, where, not to say it always happens, but generally, as people get more experienced, they think a bigger, a challenge is usually bigger, where actually maybe in this case, smaller may be a challenge?
Well, you might be talking to the wrong guy because this is, this is the type of situation I love.
But there's a lot of people that aren't necessarily focused that way.
Yeah.
I get that question a lot, when are you going to go somewhere bigger? Well, that's not necessarily what I'm looking for. I agree with what you say.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's a lot that presents some opportunity here, so...
Yeah, well, for some reason, people think Boston, Metro West, you know, they're, you know, they're looking to put the suit on and go testify in Boston all the time. Well, the chairman of your board of selectmen might like that, but not all the time, right, Chris?
Right.
Yeah, just once in a while. Yeah. So you've got to be able to do that, too. But I became town administrator in Hanover. It was perfect. I loved it. And I figured, okay, you know, I have to be prepared not to last for a long time. I ended up 25 years there. I had no idea. No idea. It worked out great, you know, I liked it there. And I keep thinking, boy, I'd like to find somebody who has that attitude. We're looking.
You're not the norm.
Huh?
You're not the norm.
Yeah, apparently not. My wife likes to mention that.
Two and a half, three years or whatever, it's moved on to something else, so...
I know.
One way or another.
We're looking, we're looking, we have thoughts in mind. And these, like I said, it's not necessarily what I write down in terms of specifics, but impressions that I get, that make a big difference, make a big difference. Now, we had a little chat, oh, yeah, okay, go to it.
I think they also have to have an understanding from the public safety side, is we're not limited to 3,000 people.
Ah.
Our departments handle Solomon Pond Mall...
Yes, good.
High Line Commons, as well as 495 and the commuter traffic. So we could, during the daytime, yeah, our people go to work, but yet, what are we covering with people that come into our community that we're covering? We could grow from 10 to 12,000 people on any given day.
Yeah, that 495, I'm glad you mentioned that. I thought of the malls already, but that 495, you cover a big stretch of that? How much do you cover?
North and south, from 290 to Bolton, which is about four miles, maybe more.
How many calls a day do you get for something like that?
It varies.
Yeah.
I mean, some days, we may not go out the door. Other days, we've had seven calls back-to-back-to-back, so people around here can't drive. Not just on 495, but on all the roads. There's more accidents in this town than Uchik's did have. We did over 70 accidents last year. That's just ones that the fire department responded to. Never mind that, all the minor ones that the police department responded to. People can't drive. Again, there's, and then there's a lot of commuters that are coming through the, through the community.
Well, I'm only serving coffee today.
Yeah, we have a couple, but they, people drive a little bit of cars here.
I got to remind people, there's nobody wandering up back. I mean, you know, I don't get nervous with people behind me. Yes, ma'am?
I'm interested in the kind of candidates that you have placed recently. Like, we're talking about our dream candidate, which of course is great, and I know you want to hear about that.
Yes.
But I'm wondering if you could just, a couple minutes, the kind of people that you've seen come through your door, like, what's even out there? You know, like, we're going shopping...
You're making it too fun for me. I was not involved in this one because we recently replaced me, second-generation me. The first replacement, we didn't use our firm. And remember, when I retired, I got to do the same thing in reverse. I got to look at all the firms that applied to replace me. And I got to look at them all, and I got to think about which, which place I wanted to work for, because I wanted to groom candidates coming into the professional world, and I wanted a good candidate. I wanted, I wanted the profession to be well-represented. I wanted to be proud of the profession, you know? I'm a third-generation public servant. I have some pride in this. And I thought they could have done better in the firm. I think they could have done better in the candidate. That candidate left. He's done now. They used MRI to replace the next candidate. And they remembered a candidate in Vermont that had not succeeded in another town on the South Shore. They remembered that candidate because they remembered that candidate saying, "My wife has relatives down here." Just a funny thing, we've got a long list of candidates that have applied, and they do these essays that we talked about, you know, we remember them, you know, there's a lot of information on them. And so they reached out to this candidate and said, "Do you want to apply to this town?" He said, "Yes, I do." And it was perfect. You know, the right, right attitude, the right background. He had gone on to, he'd done exactly professionally what he needed to do, which was the reason that he didn't get the first time. He had gone on and become a manager in another town and had some experience and had been tested, and we now knew, yep, that was a good person. And so, that was the right background. I think I actually mentioned another one that we did, it was Plainville, and she had an unusual background. She came from DPW, but she was a superstar. She was good. And they, they agreed, you know, it came to the selectmen, it was a three, three candidate finalist type of situation. I mean, sometimes people just seem good. And they, they not only have the intelligence that shines through, but you know, they're also, I think the board might have picked up on some of this. They also show an interest in where they're applying. So it's not just the selectmen asking these questions, getting answers, and you're evaluating. But you can feel that the other person's interviewing the board, interviewing the town, taking an interest. And you know, that's sometimes how you can figure out a good candidate. If you know they've been screened out. Now, the value of having a firm that is offline, not in an open meeting session, is we can ask questions and delve into background questions and find out about candidates. So that you are getting what we think is screened candidates. And they're better already. And Wayland, this is the only town that I can remember. We had to do it twice. We got into, close to a finalist, and the town just focused on one candidate. We said, that's good. That's a, that's a good candidate. But you've got to allow yourself to consider three. Because we're going to bring forward three, maybe four candidates that are qualified to do this. Don't focus on just one. They focused on just one. And I said, well, what if we lose one of these other candidates or something? It could all fall, it all fell apart. That one candidate withdrew. So we had to do it all over again. And we got someone that they liked, that was modest, and more fitting into the culture of that town, which, which thought it was a, we want somebody to get right out there and drive the car, you know? But they didn't really. They needed to learn about themselves. And then, you know, we did Sudbury. And, boy, you know, I remember doing a small fireplace out in Western Mass. And one candidate was an attorney. And he was hiding that. I said, what are you doing that for? These people may think that they want an attorney. You shouldn't be hiding that. Well, what that brought out was the fact that he was shying away from, well, he was an attorney. Well, Sudbury had a candidate who was an attorney, wasn't shy about it. They liked that. You know, the same qualification type of situation, but how they presented themselves and were they proud of what they had done, you know? Just depends. But all those candidates were good candidates. Just depends on the situation and the match, you know? There's a lot of wealthy communities in the Boston area and the, somehow, in the western part. And they seem to, seem to think that maybe they want somebody that presents, you know, presents. I don't get that. I don't understand that. But that's what they want. And then, we try to give them good candidates that present well. But we still want good candidates. So, I think maybe I should chat with you afterwards. And I get really into the nitty gritty. All I can say is that we're going to make sure that we have qualified candidates come to Berlin. Yeah. Because we're not going to present something else. We're not going to present something less. That's, that's how our reputation got to be so solid.
Hi, Liz.
Conservation again.
Hi. So, this is maybe off point and maybe out of order. But did we think about, since we're going from none to our first ever? And maybe the answer's been thought about and the answer's no. But did we think about, are they jumping in at full time? Or could somebody at halftime fit the bill and then we grow them to be full time?
That was not a question for us. That decision's already been made. It's been studied. It's been through a study committee. It's, it's an act that was created by the town. It's been, I understand it's been beaten to death through town meeting a few times. Did I say that? I didn't mean it. It just popped out. But I understand it has gone through whatever debate in the town that it needed to go through. So here we are. I can't address it other than the fact that I guess it has been discussed. Yes?
Charlene, library trustee.
Hi. I want to talk to you about the library.
Yeah.
Yeah, I do.
So, because this is the first person, setting up systems, I think in some ways is a, is a whole skill in itself.
Oh, yeah.
As opposed to coming into a place that has systems and maybe tweaking them. But, yeah, I, some folks have talked to me and sort of wondered if we actually need, would be better off bringing in somebody who is especially good at setting up systems as like a temporary one-year or whatever it seems like that person says this is what it would take to do that. And that that person might well be expensive, but then to go to a regular, you know, then do a hiring process for a long term. Which could end up still being that person. But there is that aspect of the, this is all brand new. And, you know, as you kind of say, personalities, you know, this is, you know, my thing is I love to set up new systems, but once they're running, I want to move on.
I'm not going to tell you it isn't a thought that hasn't occurred to me. That's not what we're trying for. Interim town administrators have that value. I totally understand what you're talking about. We're just trying to search for that person that is going to do it all. And as you mentioned, we're going to get some of those things. We're probably not going to get all of those things. And I'm just hopeful, and I've talked to all three members of the board extensively. I'm just hopeful that there's a patience with the board in whatever area is not strong. Remember that you have an experienced board. And I learned a great deal from my first board. It's the same type of scenario. The board had been and done all the things that the selectmen needed to do. And now a new administrator comes in. And so that you have a wealth of knowledge there. And so, it's a first time experience for the board. And there's a transfer of knowledge. But it's, it's not like the town doesn't have that knowledge. It just needs to start to focus. It needs to start to get organized. It needs to start turning into procedures and written processes. And once that does, it comes together. Well, how much time is everyone going to allow that to happen? You know, what are the goals and what are the checkpoints? Well, this can be done in three months and that's going to take a couple of years. The whole idea of someone whose expertise is setting up processes and procedures is a unique skill set, yes. Maybe we're going to focus on that skill. Maybe we're going to have a candidate like that. Maybe we're going to have three candidates in front of the board and one candidate has that skill. And another has another type of budgeting skill. Another person has human resources. And the poor selectmen are going to sit there and go, oh, which one do we want more? And which one are we going to be patient on? You know, and they sit there and they think, you know? And I've already heard a few names, you know? Okay, well, can June handle this for a while longer? Well, we will get up to speed on this and, you know? And Dennis isn't going to be around forever, you know? We know that. So we've got to worry about this. And, you know, we're hiring a new fire chief. And we've got a police chief in place. So you don't have to worry about that. You know, and they have to do all that thought processing on their feet when they choose a candidate. They have to think about that. And the burden is on them to figure that out. Well, can we find someone who's done all those things? No, of course not. Of course not. But, you know, I, I think we have shifted our thinking as we've gone through this process for the town to looking for more experience than we had originally thought we would find on our minds when we started. So, if that's a comfort, then I think we can get to that. And I, I think we may, we're not talking about maybe someone coming from an area town or, because the area towns are usually larger. We may be talking, I don't know what we're going to give up. I'm trying to figure this out. I've got to, you know, it'll, the advertisement, it'll be sort of like the, towards the end of next month that we'll have the pool of candidates. And we'll know whether we're, we're drawing smaller, smaller town candidates with wide pool of experience from north of here, maybe out of state. And we have to give up some Massachusetts experience to get that wide range of experience. So maybe that'll be one type of candidate. And another type of candidate will be the Massachusetts experience, but maybe with not as much depth. And maybe we'll have someone with less experience, but you know, they really seem to know how to do the computer pieces and do processing, flow charting, all that type of thing that we were just talking about. You know, I am a little concerned for the selectmen that they may have three very different choices in front of them at the end. My confession to the selectmen. But, you know, it's a good choice to have if we can get three quality candidates that way. Yes?
Can I just say something? You said that we had an experienced select board. And relatively speaking, our select board is young. I mean, the experience isn't long term. We had a long term selectman that was voted out last year. So, I think that's one thing to take into consideration.
Fair enough. Fair enough. On the other hand, like when I talked to Chris about her background, she's on the board. She's been on the finance committee. And she's been on the school committee for plus, that's another 15 years on the school committee. So, there's a lot of process understanding there.
I get that, but there's also two that are new. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I'm just saying that, that's something to consider.
I, absolutely appropriate to say, you know? And when I look at those things and I try to turn that into, okay, what's the positive? Okay, I think, okay, well, you've got one selectman who goes back three generations and, you know, thinks in terms of, I love the open space here. And then, then the developer starts walking and measuring the land across from the house and all of a sudden, okay, well, I know there's land issues here in the town, you know, the protection. There's a, there's a hunkering down type of thought pattern going on here. Okay, I got to pay attention to that. Because I, you know, if a candidate is, is, understands development in the sense of, man, I like to see new growth on those, new growth, right? New growth, rah rah. I go, oh, I don't think that's the candidate for this town, you know? I want somebody who understands it, but I don't want to be a new growth rah rah. So, that candidate doesn't fit.
I don't want to hog the speaking now, but I have to leave in a few minutes. So I just want to throw out there that I think that our town has incredibly gifted and talented leaders in it. You know, we have a new superintendent. We have fabulous fire chiefs that has put a lot of stuff together for us. We have a fabulous, like, I should name everybody, Molly. Everybody in this room has been great. Dave is new in the DPW. We have our-
Who's David?
Police chief.
Your David?
Smith is our new.
Okay.
And he's been great. And we have a lot of experienced people. Eloise has been here forever and has huge knowledge. I just feel, and I'm a newcomer to town. I've just been here about 25 years. So, I think that the person that we hire has to have huge respect and be able to work with and, and pull out or continue to honor this great talent that we have. So we don't have stupid people working in our town. We have smart people that have great history with the talent and some new people that are fabulous. So, we don't want this person to come in and say, you guys are stupid. We have to do it this way. Because we already have really great people. We just need someone that can bring it together and then listen to everybody really well and make a plan, like a long range plan, which the planning board has for the town. But we don't, like, as a town, feel like we understand it, which is what I'm hearing from a couple of things that people have said here. When you plan a budget, you know, what do we really want, you know? So that person needs to be able to communicate that and, you know, listen to everybody and then form a plan that we all can buy into.
That's nicely stated. There's a microphone waiting for you somewhere.
Well, it's my thing.
That was nicely done. I didn't mention intentionally, I was going to say, you're going to leave, so I'm not going to have the opportunity to say.
Yes, sorry.
We've placed military people, too. We've placed school people and municipal worlds. And we've placed out of state people. So we've done non-traditional candidates that have been successful. Mostly because if a town, and a town was like this, they just really fell in love with a military person, just charismatic person. And a base is like a small town. You've got, you've got police force. You've got sewer systems. You've got all the whole thing, right? So, but they had to understand that that person did not understand overlay reserves. They had free cash. They didn't, they had to support that person in that area, right? But they wanted the person and they were willing to do it. So there was a meeting of the minds. And so our job became, understand the differences, understand the deficits of each party and work together, fine. So it worked, as long as you understand what you're doing. But I don't think that's a situation for here. So that's why I was going to have that conversation with you offline. We've placed a lot of very different type of people. But if, if the two parties want to make it a match, it can work. It can work. And thank you for coming, because that was important to say. I appreciate it.
Liz, conservation. I echo what was just said. And one fear that I have in my mind is, I came from a town where the administrator just did what one select person told him to do. And he was not transparent. And he didn't even feel like he worked for the town. It felt like he worked for the select person who kept giving him raises. And my fear is, you know, if we don't get somebody good, who, who did they report to? Like, who did they have to please? Who reviews them? And maybe that's an HR question. But my fear is that I don't want what I saw.
Yeah.
And that can happen.
I don't want that for you either.
That can happen.
Just so you know, we chatted. I know who we're talking about. I know what town we're talking about. Those candidates are not going to get through me if I can help it. I'll tell you that right now. I know who we're talking about. Yeah.
Just to touch on what you just said, and I'm just learning this, so, as town administrator position. In education, we have Edward Farm.
Yes.
Which clearly delineates responsibilities of the, of the school committee and the superintendent.
Yes, it does.
Right? So it allows the superintendent and the leadership team to do things like the chief mentioned back there, to set out a five-year plan and have a vision for the district. I looked at, I looked at some of the laws that govern town administrators, some of the municipal laws. But I couldn't find anything that delineated responsibilities. And if you don't have something like that, then you have that, you, it's more likely to have a situation where this happens.
It is.
Where there's not a, there's not, there's not clear cut roles. And that becomes a problem. People don't know what their roles are. It's a problem when they do. But certainly more of a problem when they don't.
It is.
So was there a law like that? Was there, was there something that happened that, any time, that set some parameters of what the, what the roles of the, of the town administrator are relative to the select board?
There is a small statute that groups a bunch of titles together and says, you can call your, your person this, executive secretary, town administrator, whatever. And you can pay that person and give them benefits. It was an enabling act. That's what it was. And it really had no job description with it. What the town has done to compensate for that is they created a committee. And the committee created an act that went through the town meeting and went through the legislature. And it was a bill. This was the bill that was passed by the legislature. So you have now a founding document. And this is the act. And it is a special act for the town administrator position. It is really a selectman slash town administrator position. It is not a uniquely defining role in terms of a job description, but it reads like a job description. The one role that this position has that is established in another statute is as procurement officer under 30B. Your, your folks are all use 30B. And this person will be the procurement officer. So this person also has the authority of that act embedded through this act in that job title. So it does have separate authority in that regard. Otherwise, the authority is through the selectmen. But what is good, it delineates, you know, the activities expected of it. And there's really two levels, the way I read this document, that it's delineated. One is town-wide. So the budgeting thing was really fun for me to go through because it is mentioned quite clearly that this job is expected to deal with a town-wide approach to budgeting. But it doesn't really have authority to, I don't know what the word is. That was the word I used. But you know, it's, this person to implement that part of the act is going to have a unique skill set. It's going to have to be skilled in communication and ability to work with people to implement that successfully. Because I don't think it'd be a good idea anyway, but let's just say. You can't just point and say, get it done by Friday. Just can't. This act does not provide that for that type of person. And the board of selectmen don't have that authority either. So, you know, that's not the way it works. But the town voted this at a town meeting. So there is support and direction given by that, you know? So you have a cloak, a mantle, if you will, of direction from the town. And that's not unimportant. And if you know how to wear that mantle, if that candidate knows how to wear that mantle, that can be very effective. The other things on another level down is that this position has the right to go in and ask any department for a bunch of information. That's very useful, very helpful, and has the right to do that. And can bring that information to the board of selectmen and say, okay, smart administrator will bring that information to the board of selectmen in context and say, I've gathered all this information. I'm going to call it a capital plan. It's got a one-year, a five-year, and a 10-year mark on it. And board of selectmen, I'd like you to approve this plan. And here's why. Now that, that's a real effective use of this act. And it makes the board happy because they can now see something come together utilizing the authority given in this act. Yeah, it's their, it's their authority, but somebody has organized it. And so, that's two levels that this act can work on. And one directly through the selectmen and one directly through the title. Yes?
Is that available online for all those people who might not remember?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Maybe I should have put it on here. Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Maybe I should've put it on here. In fact, there'll be an advertisement that's gonna go up on the, um, the website. Uh, you know, on this piece of paper that you have here that says, uh, Berlin TA recruitment and MRI Gov. MRI, if you put that in, it's, it stands for municipal resources, which you'll find somewhere else up here. When, when the advertisement goes out, which will be the end of this month, beginning of next month, when it goes up, it's gonna refer you to our site. You click on that. On that site, we'll have the advertisement, the profile for the town, the ideal candidate. It also will have either the whole act, which I'm, I think I will put on, I'll also put a link on that'll take you right to the act, so you'll know that you've seen the real thing, too. And, uh, that'll be there. It's not a very long act.
No.
But it, it'll be there.
I think that it's been, it's been a long time since I looked it over, probably since last spring.
Yeah.
I think that by looking it over, maybe some of those questions that we all have will be extinguished.
We want it there for the candidates, too. We want everybody to be looking at the same, everybody is looking at the same information. Good chance they're gonna arrive at the same conclusions. Well, I don't know if it's a good chance, but it's a more likely chance they're gonna arrive at the same conclusions. Oh, alrighty. There's a chance they'll arrive at the same conclusion. She's a hard one to win over. Working on it, though. Yes, sir?
I'm Peter Hoffman, Chair, EDC Economic Development.
Yes.
So, is MRI inclined to advise the town to lean towards a process or new TA candidate versus a, uh, a conventional candidate? What I mean by that is, as Charlene said earlier, it's, there's a transition from nothing to something.
Yeah.
And that candidate might be better served, or the town might be better served by such a candidate. I'm not advising, I'm just wondering what MRI's advice to the town is.
Well, I would, at some point, I'm, I'm gonna answer that, because that's what today is about. Uh, but at some point, I'm gonna defer to the selectmen. I'm gonna ask the selectmen those types of questions. Uh, but we're evolving that answer in these, these meetings. Um, I think we, we have to, we have to see what type of candidates are attracted to this type of job. And we're out there recruiting candidates, too, and so on. And that's where that question becomes more pertinent. Um, the, the, the selectmen seem to be open to and aware of the things that we've talked about in terms of the big picture, pulling things together, all the, all that type of things that we've talked about. And, and, and they're looking for someone to pull these things together. So, that's, that's really important. And, and from, and we know, you know, as a profession, that stability is, is like gold, you know? Stability, longer tenures, they're wonderful things to have. And it's very hard for a town, as, as selectmen come and go and turn over, it's very hard for a town to appreciate longer tenures. But when you, when it's gone, then you appreciate it, you know? And that, that's a hard lesson to learn. How does a community learn that? But, um, so, I'm weighing that as I, I listen to your question against the shorter tenure, which is kind of what we're talking about, versus the longer tenure, the specific skill set versus the more general skill set. Is the town gonna be patient about certain things that might take longer to mature? Eventually, I'm gonna have to go back and talk to the selectmen about this.
So, if your firm doesn't advise either way?
You know, we're gonna come through with a certain set of candidates, maybe eight to ten candidates when we get to the screening committee. And, uh, that's when the rubber meets the road. I'll have this hearing, I'll have another hearing. And, uh, I think, I think I've done enough to answer your question to turn it back on you. And I've been really tempted to do this ever since you asked it. What do you think?
I don't think I've got the skill to, to know. I mean, I would be inclined to think it makes a certain amount of sense, but I don't think I, I don't have the skill to know.
Yeah, but you've got an instinct. You asked the question. You're, you're thinking.
It seems like it, it has to be a skill included in the successful candidate.
Yeah. Yeah. And the only reason I'm gonna call on this lady over here is 'cause you've already had a couple of shots, and then I'm coming to you. Yes, the, are you, are you the longest-serving person in this room?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Since nineteen eighty-three.
Eighty-three. Oh, good for you.
Intuitively.
And a former selectman.
Oh, well, see, we do have that experience. Go to it.
Um, personally, I would not be adverse to a seasoned administrator who is looking to, you know, end their retire, um, end their working career-
Uh-huh.
And coming in here, they would have an innate knowledge of setting up stuff, because they're very experienced.
Uh-huh. Yep. Yep.
But maybe it's just reflex, I'm old.
No, no.
You're not old, you're experienced.
See, all these things have occurred to me. It, it depends on the candidate pool in the end. And, uh, you know, it doesn't mean my thought pattern leans towards a preference. It just occurs to me, okay, that type of candidate would suit very well here and do a lot of good things. And then, you know, like, I've been waiting to hear, okay, do we need someone with, um, the skill sets that come with the, you know, the modern communication devices? Do we need the flashy, up-on-the-screen presentations at town meeting type of thing that might come with the, the younger generation or something like that? I don't know. I haven't been hearing that. So, that's part of the listening thing that I have to do today. So, I'm waiting to get a little more information, but I was waiting to see if I got that comment. Thank you very much.
The other, one-
Oh, you get another try. Go ahead.
No, one last. One of the problems that I see, and a lot of people have less institutional memory, um, less institutional memory than me, is when they make a policy, it should be up on the town's website as opposed to buried in their minutes, because people should be able to see it. It should not be a surprise.
Sure. That's fine. Um, do you feel that time is tight in the town, that there aren't enough resources in terms of time to get things like that done? Say, what, that was the intent of the board, but, you know, it's, a lot of things to be done, and that's lower on the list. Say, say if that were the scenario.
If you're posting your minutes, just pull it out of your minutes and immediately-
Oh, I know, but I'm asking a different question. I'm asking if you think the resources are, are easily-
Everybody has tight time.
Oh.
And they always want you to do more with less. As far as being broke, I have heard that since I became in eighty-three. Finance committee, be frugal, it's a rough time.
I have to confess, I've used that a few times myself. Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Now, I promised to swing over here, and then I'll come back.
We, um, we've kind of concentrated a lot on the, uh, what, what might be dysfunctionality and things that need to be worked on. But I think we really wanna promote Berlin. Um, I, in my short three years here, in my, my second career, um, this is an awesome place to work. It's an amazing town-
Good.
With, with a tremendous amount of growth, with, with commercial and, and some residential, um, that's, it's on the forefront here. There's a lot of building going on, potentially two more hotels. You know, we've got the huge private complex going in, and over fifty-five development, and possibly another one. There's just a huge amount of growth. The town is, um, the town is fairly well off financially. Uh, they have never, haven't hit two and a half-
Shh, don't let that secret out, okay?
Haven't hit two and a half percent in ten years, I think, with the tax.
I've, I've looked at a few of the numbers. I get it. Yeah.
The town's in good shape. It just needs that guidance. And I think, you know, it is. Except for me, it's an amazing group of departments. They, they work well together.
That's what they told me, too, including the exception. Yeah.
So, but, uh, they, you know, everybody works well together. You've got all the safety that's, that's like this and, and just works well together. As well, again, all the departments work together. Uh, it, it's a great place for somebody to come to. Uh, again, some experience would, would, would tie all of these things in. Um, but there's plenty, there's plenty for somebody to do, even whether they're, whether they have moderate experience or, or, or vast experience. There's a lot of things to do, but there's a huge, um, support for it, a great support team, and, and just good people. And the citizens have been great for these three years, you know, that, uh, they're very supportive of, of everything that, that the town departments are trying to do to move forward. So, it's really an attract, should be an attractive place for somebody to want to come to.
Period. That was a great speech, by the way. And so, the selectmen decide to hire a young gun. Is that gonna be well received?
Yes.
Guns on the person.
Oh, darn, you ruined my fun, but yeah. It was pretty interesting. Immediate reaction, nod of the head. I think you, yeah, I'm, I'm pretty impressed. I think you folks might be ready for this. I mean, some places aren't, but I'm not hearing a lot of resistance. It's, it's, it's pretty impressive.
At the end of the day, it's gonna come down to who fits best on that final interview with the board of selectmen. That's what it's gonna come down to. Who, who, what's the chemistry between the members of the board and the candidates? That's what it usually comes down to.
I would, uh, take, take this moment to say, um, it is more important, in my thinking, that the candidate get along with the board first, especially in the first year and a half, as opposed to the department heads. So, if, if you as a department head are sitting there and saying, "Oh, I wish they'd choose that candidate. They didn't choose that candidate," you know, and you feel that way, let it go. Let it go. Because it's more important that those four people get along over the next year. And versus if they chose your candidate and things don't go well, it really is. Because things can work better for you in the long run as a department head, if it's unified at that level.
You have a group of department heads that-
Yeah.
That, they'll grab on, and because of decisions made, they'll move forward. They, they really do. They, they wanna move forward, um, you know, wanna work closer with the school. The school's going through some changes.
Well, I guess July one, huh? Big day.
We're all together.
Big day. Well, I'm just trying to make clear that the act makes it clear that you're, you're not just hiring a one-person show type of situation. You've got four people that are running this town as of July one. And, uh, I, I think the, the, clearly the lesser of the four is the town administrator. Is, this, that's not an authority position. That is a, that is a facilitator position. That is one that has gotta understand and take that board of selectmen role to the next level. And that can only be done as a foursome. So, you want that to succeed. You really do. And there was another waving of a hand over there. Oh, there it is. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tricia. I'm on the screening committee.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I have very limited municipal experience. I worked for the town of Weston for like three months for the previous town administrator.
I worked for him for ten years. I got your P.
Yeah. I think we might've been there at the same time. But anyhow, I just wanted to add to what Eloise said, um, and point out that I, again, have very low municipal experience compared to Eloise, of course. But, um, I feel like we need somebody experienced. And I also feel like we need somebody who's flexible. And having a combination of somebody with a lot of experience and flexibility, because there's, um, you know, this town is a diverse population. You have new people moving in, you have older people that have been here forever, and a lot of change going on. So, I, I feel like, I just wanted to add to that. The flexibility, I think, is an important thing, and I'm-
Yeah. Yeah, you're wise, wise to say that.
Yeah. I'm not sure if you're getting somebody who's retiring in their last job. How much of a degree of flexibility do they have? I don't know. And again, it depends on candidates, but-
It so much depends. I, I really, I was lucky enough to know that I felt like I was ready to retire. I mean, some people are lucky enough to know that that point has come in their life and their career. Um, but I always wondered why there wasn't an ability to step down to a lesser role. Some reason in, in my world is you can't go back to being an assistant. You can't go back to being a, I used to love assessing. I couldn't go back to being an assessor again. I had to just retire. That was it. And I thought, well, that's a little unfair. I'd like to go to a less pressure-packed situation, just enjoy myself again. I'd like to go back to this classroom and teach again, right? You know, just step back.
Yeah, I can do that.
Again?
Yeah.
Oh, thanks. That's great. But, you know, so maybe, you know, this type of situation, there's a candidate who's, who's thinking about returning, says, "I wouldn't mind trying that again in a smaller situation." Because it's, it's fun, you know, sometimes. I had the situation where the town decided they'd migrated all the way to what you're facing right now when I started, just so, so much the same thing. And they had migrated all the way to a strong town manager act. And I really felt a burden to help them implement it, because I knew it was gonna be a difficult transition, just, just by virtue of, it is. It's just a hard thing to do. And, and I had the, the knowledge of the town to help with that transition. So, I did that transition. So, I stayed a little longer. We got it done. It was a smooth transition, and then I, I was gone. You know, I felt that burden. I would've liked to have just eased out a little earlier, you know? I might've liked doing this, you know, that type of thing. So, maybe we'll get that candidate. I don't know. I thought I'd like to give an opportunity to the selectmen. These, these are your folks. These are your citizens. Was there anything that you wanted to say to your folks just sitting here, just because? Is there anything?
We really, I, I feel like I really wanna hear all of this, what, you know, their concerns are, what, what you're looking for. Um, it's a big decision, and I need to hear from all of you. I really appreciate today that you've given some input. And any other time you wanna let us know, please let us know, you know, how you're feeling, how about this. Lisa, you wanna add anything? No? Okay. Oh, come on. They need your voice on like camera.
There's plenty of my voice on the camera.
Just, uh, David is an employee. I think, uh, the fire chief summed it up, but a touch on, as much as they say there's growth and change, it really hasn't changed, it's not a high, I can't think of a high turnover employees. The same people have been here for a long time. Residents have been here. People don't come and go. They're pretty steady. I think you have a very easy job, after I just listened to the most seasoned employee here, Eloise, say, "We'd like somebody with experience, somebody that's a veteran. It'd really be good." And when you said, "If the selectmen said a young, new, super sharp person would be being posted at," she goes, "No." She was right on board.
I knew.
So, think how easy that was for you.
Oh.
Both sides pulled in. She was the first one to say, "I like a veteran." So, you have a very good working group here. And it's the fire chief summed it up and everything else. It's kinda, you know-
Charming is the word that comes to mind. I know.
Yeah, it's, you know.
It's kind of a nice, nice word, isn't it?
Well, the town has a Norman Rockwell appeal. It has, you know, it has that. We just, as employees, we want a channel of information. There's always been an open-door policy. This is exciting for employees to know. There's now gonna be a person here Monday through Friday. As we always have had, an open-door policy, as Chris said, you could approach the select board with anything you need. It's just not always convenient for people that work different shifts or have schedules. Now, there'll be a continuity, as you said, a fourth selectman. I like how that was said, because if you read the act, it wasn't clear to some of the employees as to what that person's position was. But you summed it up as a fourth, uh, select person.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I learned my job from the real fourth selectman. That was the secretary to the board of selectmen. She was the fourth selectman. She was the force in town. Wonderful woman. You don't need to hear that. Um, I would like to invite you to chat with me afterwards. And at some point, the camera's gonna be turned off. Maybe you wanna chat with me instead of sending an email. It's honestly, you're welcome to do that. I've gotta tell ya, I'm not gonna lug this coffee out of here, and these cookies are gonna stay, and Mary's not gonna eat all of them. I, no, maybe not. But I feel like we're at a natural point where we can end this. Does anyone else have a comment or two that they'd like to throw in at this point? And thank you for sitting up here with me, by the way. Appreciate that.
Everybody needs affirmation, so.
And so, what classroom am I going into?
Whatever you want. What, what do you know how to do? What do you know how to teach?
Oh, I've done a bit of teaching, but, you know.